Hey, Maureen.
I'm here.
Hey.
Oh, my God.
Hi there. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Hope, can you hear me?
Perfect, thank you.
Can hear you.
Hi, Alison. All right, it is 4:00 PM and we're on time. We've got everything going. Hope?
We do.
Okay, then this is the agenda for the committee of the whole meeting. Read the Conservation Development Policy of Monday, February 14th, 2022. And I would like to, and we acknowledge with gratitude that we live and work on the traditional unceded territory of the Skowamish Nation. These people have been stewards of these lands and waters surrounding the Guala Com Bowen Island for millenniums. First item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Anybody have anything that they want to add? It's pretty much a one-horse pony here, so we approve the agenda by consensus. We'll move right on to staff reports. Conservation Development Policy Staff Report, Daniel Martin, Manager of Planning and Development. And Daniel, it's right over to you.
Thank you, Mayor Andrew. Thank you, Council, for this special meeting to discuss this policy. I have a presentation and I have a few, it's a little bit longer than I would normally present, so just ask your patience as I go through. But I just know it's been a while since we have discussed this policy, so I wanted to give a little bit more of the background than I often would. Hi. Do you see that okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Excellent. Okay. So as I said, we're here to talk about Conservation Development Policy. So just by way of background, this is the Island Plan 2021, which looked at adopting a policy to embed conservation development principles in municipal planning, and so looking to adopt a conservation development policy. Just by way of background, because I know it's a term that maybe not everyone's familiar with, or just seeing we're on the same page. This is just taken from Wikipedia and from some planning literature, Conservation Development, Controlled Land Use Development Adopting Principles for Allowing Limited Sustained Development While Protecting Area's Natural Environment Features. It talks about conservation development is usually defined as a project that dedicates a minimum of 50% of the total development parcel as open space. And then just from another source, this is from Planet Edison, which is a planning website. It combines the development of land with the protection of natural resources, so an approach to development that prioritizes the protection of natural resources, open space and agricultural lands, looking to cluster housing in a circumscribed area within a larger portion of land preserving open space. And then talks about conservation subdivisions, when you're seeing smaller lot sizes on developed parcels and development densities specified, and looking to preserve between 50 and 70% of the buildable land in a project area. And so then the next, this isn't in the report, I just pulled it together for the presentation, but just trying to highlight that many of those principles, while under different languages, exist in our current OCP. So looking for, in terms of general land use management objectives, objective to develop in areas that are not environmentally sensitive and to provide public access over land consistent with protection of community and natural environment, to create areas where land is set aside as green space in perpetuity, to discourage commercial residential strip or ribbon development. And then in terms of general residential land use management, the OCP seeks to encourage residential cluster development rather than large lot subdivisions with areas of green space between clusters set aside in perpetuity for both public and private neighborhood use. And then there's a number of policies. I just pulled some of them here and on the next slide, but there are a number. So looking at Policy 53 looks at in significant watersheds to cluster development in the least environmentally sensitive areas of the subject area. Or Policy 111, outside the Snug Cove Village Center, residential cluster development is preferred to large lot subdivision with areas of green space between clusters that are set aside in perpetuity for public and private neighborhood use. Policy 350 encouraging cluster forms of development to building designs that leave a smaller impact on the landscape, so to help reduce the amount of land disturbed by development and prevent fragmentation of natural habitat. And then just specifically in our rural residential land use management, there's some more policies that talk about low building density is encouraged, except that cluster housing is favored, provided it doesn't detract from the rural character of the area. And then Policy 141 is the one that I could find where it actually had like numbers associated with it. So it's talking in rural residential areas on Bowen. The OCP says that where clustering is encouraged, maximum lot sizes will be in the range of point half an acre to one acre, provided that they're suitable onsite sewage disposal system. And then finally, the OCP has a definition for the term that it uses, cluster development. Is it the grouping of lots or single-family dwellings in a location on a parcel without increasing the permitted density within that parcel? So the development area is smaller than it would otherwise be used, and the remaining area is created as green space. So while the OCP doesn't have this term conservation development, in quite the same term, what we find is throughout the OCP that the principles and policies point in that same direction of looking to focus development on smaller areas and see the remainder of the land protected. So based on that council direction, council priority, the APC prepared a report and a draft policy. So just a shot of the first page of it, but they did quite good work looking at an overview of policies and strategies and what does Bowen Island currently do, as well as comparing Metro Vancouver and the Island's Trust and some of their objectives and policies. And then they drafted a policy to sort of try to bring that all together, and they have an intent of it as to guide council and staff, to guide developers, protecting Bowen Island's natural capital, supporting implementing other municipal policies, so looking to tie into how this works related to transportation or housing or climate change. And then the policy itself is looking at, they give this sort of five-point criteria for how to evaluate development proposals outside of Snug Cove. So announce at the extent and value of existing natural features, the efficiency by which they're protected, how it incorporates cluster development principles, how it furthers affordable housing and transportation policies. So this was presented to council in November of 2019. And council at that point referred it to a number of committees and to staff for review and comment. And so I have next just a collection of those comments that the committees provided. So the Finance Advisory Committee provided comments that it would result in less pressure on infrastructure. So for example, the need for snow clearing if development is more clustered. Committee members looking at the municipality would be more aggressive about obtaining amenities from subdivisions. And then some discussion about what in the minutes is captured as land swaps, which I think is referring to the density transfer policies that are in the OCP. The Parks, Trails, Greenways Advisory Committee provided general comments about the policy, and then there are more extensive comments they provided about the APC's report itself. And so I'm not going to go all of them, but looking at some of the language around what ecosystem services included or how to better highlight the need to protect biodiversity and water. The Transportation Advisory Committee supported the draft policy, and they had comments about metrics be provided to developers, reference to the transportation plan. And looking to link this policy to the active transportation guidelines that the municipality also uses. Environment Climate Action Committee had quite a long recommendation that I've broken down here over three slides, and it's in your report, so I think I'm not going to read through other comments, but they have quite detailed feedback on the policy and how, you know, so the overall approach that should be taking. Yeah, so looking at how are we protecting land? How is the, one intention, it's not, it's clear it's not increasing density, but it's sort of exchanging how the development is taking place, looking to make sure that a fee is provided to monitor and protect the land going forward. And I'm looking at how the land being provided is being mapped and what detail of mapping is being provided, focusing on green infrastructure and the benefits that can provide. And looking at fire smart considerations and how that plays into overall policy. So that was the end of what I had to present on. And then the recommendation just from staff is to have this discussion and have feedback from council on how how to proceed with the policy and ultimately looking for a direction to revise the policy and bring it back to a future council meeting.
All right. Well, thank you very much, Daniel. And I'll open it up to questions, and then I've got a few comments in here too. So who wants to start it off here? I mean, there's a lot in there that's going to have to be digested. And I referenced back to page five or seven in the staff discussion. There's a lot of principles in there where they brought up really good points from the different committees and stuff, but I don't know if this is the appropriate place to put them. Anyway, Rob, go ahead.
Yeah, Daniel, really quickly, what specifically is in the report on, I'm interested in the density transfer policies. If we have anything in there in the OCP or not about density transfers, how that would work and whatnot.
Sure. I mean, I think that's probably not like specific to this policy, but there are policies in the OCP about the transfer of density. So the idea behind the OCP being there's a maximum density of development. And where, I'm just reading, it's Policy 114 in the OCP, where the permitted density under the land use bylaw is less than that an owner elects to develop them at, they could, they could reallocate the density. Or the density could be reallocated to places that are designated as density increase eligibility areas as part of a land use application. The policy has never been used and has always been challenging in terms of how it's how it's implemented and how it works on the ground in terms of some of it, I think, comes down to sort of the value difference in between, you know, the density potential of having a 10-acre lot on the waterfront versus saying, well, that's equivalent to an apartment unit in Snug Cove. It doesn't work out. Yeah, I think that's probably a broader conversation than.
And it almost sounds like, it almost sounds like if it's so rare that it's almost a case-by-case basis that we'd have to look at something like that, but maybe, you know, it might be helpful just to have some wording in the policy that is something that council could potentially look at doing. And I know it's challenging because it might be between two different owners or yada, 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 how that works out. But yeah, I just want to leave the door open on that and because I think that maybe coming down the road, if there is, and we do have sewage capacity in the future in the Cove, obviously, you know, be nicer to try to see if we can maybe have some extra density in the Cove and save even more forested land outside of the Cove. So just keeping that door there and knowing that developers know that that's a possibility. So thanks for that.
Good point, Rob. That's density transfer. Maureen?
Thank you, Mayor Andrew. Just given that we're dealing with questions at this point. Daniel, was there any feedback from your Island's Trust on this?
No, I went back through the file because I realized when I was reviewing my report that that wasn't included. And I'm not quite sure now. I would have to go back and look some more where that fell apart, but I don't have any feedback at this point. And I think that that would be a part of going forward is making sure that the comments are received.
Thank you.
Is that it, Maureen, for now?
I have comments, but I think we were getting questions at this point.
Okay, Sue Ellen?
Yeah, just a quick question. Somewhere in there, I think it was in the definition of, I've lost it now. But the word quantifiable came up. I believe it was in what was a natural asset? Oh, I see. I'm in the wrong report. Sorry. And my question is, could the, would we have any way at the current time to quantify the value of a conservation asset or an ecological asset?
I mean, I know there are approaches out there that have attempted to do that, to quantify natural assets. I don't know there is an easy, like we don't have, like the municipality doesn't have.
Okay, thank you. I didn't mean it to be a trick question. I'm just thinking about all that asset management work and I agree with you. I just thought I might have missed something because the word quantifiable is in there, and I'll find it in a minute. Okay, thank you.
Hey, thanks, Ellen. Questions or comments? Wow, tough crowd. Okay, Maureen, back to you, and then Sue Ellen.
Yeah. Thank you. I think this is an important policy and a hard policy in some respects and a really easy policy in some other respects. It brought me back to considerations of what is a policy versus what is a bylaw versus what is a regulation, what are procedures? And I think when the policy went out for feedback, that we received such diversity of feedback from the various committees that you may have confused matters a little. And that's not to disparage the feedback. It was useful in clarifying that for me. The frequency with which there were references in Daniel's report to existing policies in the OCP, for example, suggested that a conservation development policy might be redundant in some respects if it were to get into the level of detail that the feedback from some of the committees suggested. So what I'd like to suggest in the way of feedback is that we make this less complicated than it is. I think it is overly complicated as it stands, and it treads on existing policies, existing procedures, et cetera, that are in place and are basically functioning well. So in thinking about, you know, how to tackle the revision of the policy, the policy itself is actually fairly lean, but I'd like to see it become even more lean. And you kind of buried the lead, Daniel, in the report. At the end of your report, you mentioned that that nature needs at least half point. And I think that that's the starting point for this policy, and it's also something that people can grasp fairly easily, rather than delving into the details. And once that's established, then you talk very briefly about what conservation development is, and you've got a couple of definitions there that work well. So nature needs half. Any rezoning is going to require conservation development be applied, and any rezoning requires cluster development. And that's it. I think the one-page policy, you know, keep it really simple, let it build on all of the things that we already have in place, because as you pointed out, it's all through the OCP. We don't need to replicate it. We may need to reference it, but we don't need to replicate it because in trying to include all of the feedback from all of the committees, you know, it's not going to work. It's going to confuse matters further, whereas, you know, the simple point, you know, the resonant point that nature needs half, we're going to require this in rezonings, and we're going to require cluster development going forward. That's clear. My comment.
Yes. Very well said, Maureen. I agree with you 100%. I think, and keep it simple, simple's better. And there's a lot of stuff that's already in place. You know, when I look back and the original policy and that sort of thing, it was about clustering and say a 10-acre piece of parcel, you put all the buildings on two acres and keep the rest as green space and, you know, preserve our natural spaces and that sort of thing, and put some paths in there, whatever you want to do. After, you protect also the eco-sensitive areas, I think have to be protected. There's no question about that. But that could be more of just a, just a planning tool than certainly not a bylaw, but even a policy. And I think those are the simple principles, which you do reiterate in that, on that staff discussion part of it. Okay, over to Sue Ellen. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I mostly agree with Counselor Nicholson. I too was thinking, what are we going to rewrite this in the committee, the whole, or ask staff to do that? Why wouldn't we just look to the OCP? So you've heard this kind of thing from me before. I would, I like the idea of keeping it really simple and referring to those policies and maybe others that are in the OCP and maybe some other ones like climate projections or new mapping that may come. For example, you know, in the future, we may receive different kinds of mapping like the groundwater recharge mapping that may come from the trust if the budget passes next month. And I thought I agree about the nature needs half, needs to be the centerpiece of the information that isn't anywhere else up until now. And I note that the APC, I think it was the APC, talked about framing this as an educational piece or a communication piece for people that might be interested in plant, in developing. And so that also, for me, says, well, let's keep it really simple, a one-pager, as Counselor Nicholson says, and with, and pull the resources together for them so they can see what's already existing, but basically just like a guide to the policies. I also think that gets us away from some of the issues like the definitions. For example, I found the word quantifiable. Natural capital is defined as the quantifiable economic benefit of a natural area. That's very difficult for developers and regular people. And it also might disqualify the whole policy because nothing can be that clearly quantified unless you spend a lot of money doing it. So I like the idea of keeping it simple. I support nature needs half. And I might just add that we might want to add, one thing we might want to add has happened since 2019, and that is that now our auditors, audited financial statements include the reference to ecological assets or natural assets, whatever we called it in there. And so I was going to propose that the only thing be added be, well, I thought D and E could be changed to furtherance of the municipalities accepted, you know, approved plans and policies, examples, transportation, affordable housing, maybe something about affordability because I don't know how that, anyway, but and also add in, reflect the auditor's note about in the municipal financial, annual financial statement. And because that's something that occurred since then, and it reflects the value to the municipality of those, everything from watersheds to stormwater management and all those other things, which we don't have to list them all, but we could provide references for people to the official community plan, which goes council to council. Thank you. So that's my general comments. I think that covers most of them. Nature needs half, referring to other particle plans and policies and reflect the auditor's note. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Sue Ellen. Alison and then David.
Myself unmuted here. Very much, I think, picking up on what Counselor Nicholson said. I guess when I started reading through this again on the weekend and looking at it and then looking at the OCP questions, back in the 2019 Island Plan, we talked about embedding, the wording in the plan at that point was embedding conservation development is a regular planning tool. I haven't quite got the words right, but it didn't have anything really about developing a policy that appeared later. And so thinking about all the policies that are already in the OCP, I guess, I don't know why we would be doing a conservation policy document. To me, what we need is a guide to conservation development that lists all the sections of the OCP policy, for example, that cover conservation development. We probably need to work on the natural capital sections a bit because that has developed more since 2010. I was very surprised that there was no reference to the Gibson's Natural Capital, Natural Assets program that I saw in the report. And so a guide to conservation development that we would hand to developers and it would give them, you know, here's the OCP. I mean, we've already used those OCP principles. We've used them in in planning. And remember that most other communities, the land use bylaw regulations match the OCP regulations. So if the OCP says you can have one acre density, one acre lots in a 10-acre plot, their land use bylaw will say one acre lots for that area, whereas ours says 10 acres. And the OCP will say you can have one acre lots in this particular area on the map. So we're already doing this in a way with what we've been doing. So to me, it should be a guide. And, you know, if you do a policy and the wording in the policy is slightly different than the wording in the OCP for the same thing, you're going to end up with nothing but debate and that's lack of clarity. So to me, we don't need a conservation development policy. We need a conservation development guide or implementation tool or something. And the Economic Development Committee a number of years ago wrote a guide for criteria to assess development or rezoning proposals with the economic development lens. So having a guide to assessing development proposals with a conservation development lens could be as part of the guide. I've got a whole bunch of questions on the specific wording in this thing. And I guess the other is, okay, the other thing that was in the back in 2019, which I think is key to all of this, is the site alteration bylaw, which we haven't got the draft on yet, because I think part of what we're trying to do is prevent the harm being done to the environment and setbacks through streams, et cetera, before we've even had a chance to consider it. And, yeah, so I'm not in support of developing a policy. I'm definitely in support of developing a guide.
Okay, thank you, Alison. David?
Thank you, Gary. So, yeah, I'm not quite sure where I am right now after all these various comments. But first of all, the comments from the various committees, particularly the Parks and Greenways and the Climate and Environment Committee, they were looking at this, and it gets to what Maureen was saying right at the top about, okay, is this a policy? Is this a bylaw? They were looking at all the ways to jam into this thing to make sure that land is properly protected. And that's like to try to add all that in is way too complicated because this, I agree with Maureen's point, that it needs to be simple. And I certainly, the point that I was going to bring up is the nature needs half as well that Daniel had in it, and there's, you know, Metro Vancouver has that as one of its goals as well. I think Alison might be right in the idea of a guide rather than a policy. I think that sort of simplifies it as well and takes it out of, you know, you've got to have the words exact same as in the OCP and so on. But I guess I want to go back to Daniel because Daniel has said that in working with developers in the last few years, even though we don't have this, you know, we've not completed this work, but nevertheless, the principles have been conveyed to developers. I guess that's why I'm heading back to Daniel as to say, okay, in the work that you do, So I guess what, that's why I'm heading back to Daniel as to say, okay, in the work that you do, to make this simple for folks, because I think the concept is pretty simple, um, what would work best? Like you've already told people, hey, here are the principles, council hasn't passed it, but hey, best to follow it anyway. Is that just fine? Or would, would a guide be useful? And if we have a guide, some of the points that were in the, uh, what the Advisory Planning Commission put down in the policy, you know, setting, having a look at the, the local ecology, making sure you protect, you're leaving the, the, the most important ecological areas, uh, left alone and, and so on. So just over to you for a sec, Daniel. What, how are you doing all this?
Sure. I mean, first I just wanted briefly, um, to Counselor Morse, just the twenty nineteen island plan had the list of actions be to draft a policy. Um, and the Economic Development Committee guidelines are adopted as a policy from council. So typically that's how we've, we've done things that say this is how we want to guide development. Is it as a policy adopted by council? And then I feel like that gives, um, applicants some level of certainty that this is a, a, that council endorses this approach as opposed to maybe guidelines the planning department puts out that, um, maybe has less, has less weight almost with, with people saying, but really I want to know what council's going to think about it. Does council follow these? Um, and so at that point, I, I would, I would find a policy helpful, even if it's the sort of the simple policy that Counselor Nicholson has discussed that that, that that is helpful for people. Um, David, in terms of sort of my conversations with people, yeah, it's something that I bring up and it, it's helpful that I can point to, you know, this draft policy that's been in the works. And I can point to past rezonings that typically have seen this in some form or another, where, you know, ha- half the land has been, has been provided as park or in some form and, and half. Um, I think I found in general, it's like it works better as a principle on larger sites and it gets more challenging on small sites. And probably the most common conversation I have with people about rezonings or what I would call sort of like a state planning conversation. So the typical is I have X number of kids and so I want to have X number of lots. Um, and it could be challenging on sort of a, you know, if it's a five acre parcel or a four acre parcel that has sort of historically developed. And they say, now I want to put, you know, there's a site back here, the other kid could have another house. And I start saying council's going to look for half the lot as park potentially, and you won't need to consider this and plan it into your development. They may find it hard because he will historically it's been developed so the house is here and the road winds all the way through and gets to here. So it's, it's an easier principle when it's like an undeveloped greenfield site than a, you know, built up place where it, which has development throughout sort of historic development and they're looking to rezone to divide it up. They, that's where I've had more challenges from people trying to figure out how they're going to. Um,
Okay, so I'm back to, uh, back to agreeing with you about the idea of a policy rather than, uh, guidelines or what Allison's term was. Um, one thing that's missing in Maureen's simple version is that, that line that the, um, um, Advisory Planning Commission had about the efficacy of the way that the land would be protected. And that's rather a critical point. I mean, okay, how is it, how is it going to be protected? And, and, and so I think it's important for the developer to know that there needs to be some mechanism that protects it forever. Not something that, okay, let's just leave this aside and I promise I won't do anything, uh, for now. Um, and, and you know, it could become, um, a park, it could be, um, some legal mechanism, but there needs to be something to say that this land is protected. Um, and that should be part of it.
Yeah, I, I agree a hundred percent, David, and I just, sorry for interrupting, but how is it, how are these pieces of property? And I'm thinking, um, nectar yoga, when we were sort of threw that around. What, how was that piece of other piece of land protected? I, uh, was it parkland? Uh, Daniel, or was there just pass through with that covenant? I don't think, I think a covenant's fine personally, but I don't want to see the property change hands. I don't want to see us taking half the property. Uh, I don't think that's, I think that's unduly fair, but I, I think the property can be covenanted to not have any further development on it and protect the environmental aspects of it.
The, in the nectar yoga rezoning, we did a combination where there's a, there's a, a portion of it that is to come to us as park. And we entered into a covenant that says if they need to subdivide by a certain date to provide the park. Um, and further there's covenant that, um, when the residential lots are created, that they have covenants on them to limit development.
Right.
Um, to a portion of those lots. So it's a combination.
Yeah, which I think has always worked in the past. David, are you happy with that?
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
All right, so those are my comments for now. Thanks. And
Okay.
Yeah, simplify, yes, but we need, we need some details there so that it's
Protected.
Protected and we need, you know, a policy, uh, as Daniel said, so that developers know that this is what council's looking for. I mean, when we're, when we're talking to developers, we're looking for an amenity always. When there's, there's a rezoning and this is one of the amenities that we're looking for.
Yeah, good point. Michael, then back to Allison.
Um, Gary, listen, uh, before this meeting started, I was wondering why I was struggling to find context uh, in the, in this particular discussion. And, and hearing what everyone has said, I can see very clearly why I was struggling to find some context. Um, but listening to what people have said, and I, I think some good things have been said, and just listening to Daniel now. Please, if we're having a policy, can it say what needs to be said? So it's easy to understand, easy to implement and avoid such detail and complication where to Allison's point, it runs, does, runs foul of running over other existing, uh, rules, regulations, bylaws that we have. Initially, I thought, do we really need a policy? If Daniel says we do, I'm very happy to go along with that and to try to find some context, let it be a helpful one and set general guidelines and avoid the traps, which I think several of the councillors this evening have, have, have quite rightly articulated so that we end up with a document which is universally helpful. One that can be followed and is easy to understand by anybody who's actually maybe developing for us. Maybe they're helping us with some, building some, uh, some rentable property or whatever. And, and, and satisfies all aspects of the ambitions and hopes that we have of preserving to the best of our ability all the land that we have under our control. So simplicity, context and avoiding an opportunity, I think we're going to have to rethink this out again uh, in whatever format so that it, it's, it is, uh, it satisfies those needs. I, I think councillors have explained it very well, why, why we need it and why it needs to be, uh, effective and not overly complicated. And I really respect, uh, Counselor Morse's, uh, uh, comment that it, it, it wants to be a document that does not complicate and run against other existing O C P or anything else that we might have because that would be meddlesome in the extreme. So there we go. Simple, maybe two, three pager. Let's get, let's get it done and set the guidelines and then we have a policy which is directional, uh, rather than frankly, uh, micromanaging.
Yeah, okay, thanks, Michael. Uh, to your point, I think, yeah, we could put in something there that the property could be gifted and or, and or, uh, covenanted or a combination of both, which I think probably works out. It's going to be very, usually very subjective, I would think. Allison, back to you and then, uh, and Sue Ellen.
Okay, um, well, I think it's sort of, you know, if you're looking at the statement of intent, it does use the word guide, council and staff in their work. And a policy is usually a set of rules that you follow. Um, and then it says to guide developers as they plan their work. Again, so I, and I totally agree, if we're going to use a set of criteria to rank, um, which I think is what really is what's, um, under A, B, C and D, you know, and E on the last page, for a second of the last page. Um, then that should be a policy. Um, so your policy, you know, could just say, you know, you must have been in analysis to the extent value of existing natural capital features. And the accounting profession is working very hard on trying to figure out how to account for these things. Um, so, and the, the O C P, we have to follow those policies that are in the O C P. They're not there for, well, if you feel like it, they're policies that are supposed to be followed.
They're, it's a guideline.
The O C P, they're
It's a guideline.
They're not guides, they're policies. There's a difference.
I argue.
Okay, um, but they're all over the map in the O C P and the O C P is not a tiny document. So to actually, you know, if you want to have your policy that says, you know, we'll evaluate rezonings with a conservation development lens and please refer to the O C P and this appendix, you know, look yourself, but here's some of the key ones. So I still think we need a sort of a, a mixed bag of, uh, policy and guide and something very simple.
Okay, thank you, Allison. As you all.
Um, thank you. Uh, a couple more things I was going to say, in the chat, I put the link to, uh, Gibson's, what they call an eco asset strategy. And, um, they haven't, as far as I know, until, up till now, anyway, they hadn't, um, uh, gone around quantifying or mapping or, uh, inventorying all of their, uh, natural assets. They actually rely on that. Um, um, here's a little quote. Uh, the town's annual financial statement includes an auditor's note that establishes this as an accounting, um, precedent. And, uh, nature provides municipal services and that's the kind of language that you'll find in there and that's what they use, uh, rather than a full, uh, inventory. So anyway, that's just there if you'd like to look. Um, with reference, I think it would be good to, uh, reference as Rob suggests the, uh, density transfer uh, policy and the two schedules in the official community plan, which are the maps of, uh, density donor areas and density receiver areas. And, um, I think that helps make things clear. And, uh, you know, I'm not familiar with density transfer having happened successfully on Bowen yet, but it does get used on other municipalities and other islands. I'm, one of them is happening now on, uh, uh, Denman Island. It's the second, um, attempt by an affordable housing project, uh, to gather enough density uh, in the cove. And so they're doing that, um, with the help of deals with other, uh, island landowners. And, um, we'll see if it works this time. I'm not saying that it will, but it's in, in the works and it, uh, should, we should reference it as well as, uh, uh, some of the main ones that you had, um, in your presentation, Daniel. Those were good ones, uh, that I looked to as well. I, uh, I do think the, if we can use the definitions, if we can refer to the definitions in the official community plan as much as we can, I think that would help because, um, I found the definitions in this draft, uh, conservation development policy, um, troublesome. Not as much, I mean, I really liked the examples of, uh, that you showed at the beginning, Daniel, in your first few slides. Um, they were clearer than, for example, I'm looking at the, um, definition of cluster development. This is on, uh, page thirteen, right above the policy itself. Uh, it says, uh, creates an attractive func- functional neighborhood, leaves as much natural space as practicable for preservation, recreation or agriculture. So does that mean that agriculture counts as, uh, um, natural capital or, uh, the word preservation? I, anyway, recreation could be a, um, uh, open playing field and, uh, not, uh, something that relates to, um, ecological goods and services, uh, and, uh, or pollinators and, you know, all of the different kinds of, uh, uh, of nature services that the municipality and the people who live in it re- rely on. So, um, uh, this, it's another reason I would have for slimming it down or, uh, aligning it more with the, um, uh, examples that you had at the beginning of the, um, of your presentation, Daniel. The definitions need to be, uh, clear. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Sue Ellen. Um, Maureen, back to you.
Yeah, just a quick point, the West Vancouver has done its natural asset management evaluation. And they came up with three point two billion as the contribution to their economy.
Hmm, interesting.
Yeah.
Uh, Liam, is that it, Maureen? Thank you, sorry. Liam?
I, I just wanted to, I really like this conversation. I think there's a lot of valuable ideas coming to the fore and I, and I wanted to just share a couple of thoughts because that, I know Emmanuel, um,
Machado.
Machado quite well from his time even before Gibson's and he and I would go back and forth on some of the virtues of trying to quantify, uh, ecosystem services. And it's a very difficult, complex thing to do. And, and I always cautioned against it because you're liable to miss something or many things in that quantification. And so you, you know, um, you may try to come up with a number for the value of a tree or a stream and soon find yourself having undervalued it. And, uh, and so you, you could end up, I don't think that would happen here on Bowen, but I think the more that that becomes the practice, then the more, um, people will be willing to pay uh, to avoid protection of those ecosystem services. And so I, you, some of these things that we're talking about are so incredibly complex that we'll, we'll never really get it quite right. And so I kind of like the idea that Counselor Nicholson and others were talking about keeping it really simple and, and, and keeping it at that, that higher level. Uh, so I just wanted to, we, we did some work on this, um, back in Victoria a long time ago and, uh, and when we were researching it, um, this was probably ten years ago, you know, ecosystem services were estimated to like globally to account for, so at the time it was like twenty-three trillion dollars, uh, which surpassed the global G D P by, I think, two or three times at that point. And, but even then it's like, well, what is that? What does that number even mean? Um, so, uh, you know, I just, again, I would just kind of caution us from going down that road of trying to quantify too much.
Here, here. Thank you, Liam. Uh, anybody else? So, uh, go ahead, David.
Yeah, just, just getting back to where we are then. Um, so I think we're most, we're pretty well agreeing with, with Maureen started us off, it's to simplify it. And, um, Daniel, do you need more from us or is, is that kind of, we added the nature needs half, which is, you know, um, you alluded to in your, in your piece. Um, is that okay, Daniel? Or do, do we, do you need more from us?
Um, I mean, I think based on that, like if council moved the recommendation, I would have, yeah, I'd be able to redraft it and bring it back to council for referrals. Um, you know, I mean, I think all of this has been very helpful and, and clarifying too in terms of the direction council wants to go. Um, yeah, and I'm totally open to more, more discussion on it as well, but yeah.
Okay, thanks, Daniel. Um, Liam, okay, your hand, hand came down. Allison, you still have anything?
Well, yeah, I guess, um, I think we've had some discussion on whether, you know, is it a policy? Is it a guide? Is it? So having the motion says return the revised policy. So maybe it has to be a more general motion that council directs staff to, um, consider the feedback provided at the, da, 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 on the conservation development policy and return to a future regular council meeting with recommendations.
Uh, to that point, just the policy guide part of it or just the whole thing? I mean, obviously.
Well, I, I mean, I think, I'm just not sure how Daniel would, you know, are we, as I said, I
You know, I don't think
Policy and I, I'm not exactly sure what the end product should be.
I don't think there's, there may not be enough, um, enough, uh, strength in, in a guide. Um, I think
No, but maybe there's a mix. Maybe the policy's a one pager and then there's attachments and things, other things that are done like, um, you know, how to evaluate, you know, maybe it's a policy where we, how we were going to evaluate rezonings and, you know, so. Anyhow, I'm, I'm just don't think I could support just saying return and revise Anyhow, I'm, I'm just don't think I could support just saying return and revise policy. I think there's more to it than just a revised policy.
Okay, thank you. Maureen?
Uh, thanks. And I'm comfortable with the wording of the recommendation as is. I think it does have to be something at the policy level. I think that's the appropriate, appropriate level. For it to be at my concern had been that what we were looking at in the recommendation and the comments that we had before us. Didn't support the development of a policy as such. It wasn't at the right level. And I just want to thank Daniel for his work and and consulting with all of those committees and 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 getting feedback. And trying to. Sense of it all. Also. The extent to which. The the key points that you would want a conservation. And development policy to accomplish, the extent to which those are already included in. Uh, in in the O C P, I think it's really important to give comfort to to council and also. To members of the community that what's going on here is. Reconceptualizing at a higher level with with some additional bits. You know, what what it is that we have been doing and have valued on on Bowen Island. The the point that David brought brought up about the importance of, he said this came from the. Advisory Planning Commission about having a mechanism to protect. The covenanted lands, I think is really critical because. Our, the general answer we get when we talk about, you know, covenant, how it's enforced and so forth is is that. It's not enforced very well. So if we want. Conservation and development actually function. That enforcement piece has to be tackled. However, it doesn't, in in my view, have to be tackled. In a policy, it gets tackled through a regulation, it gets tackled through some other other means. So those are my comments. I I'd like to move the recommendation if. And folks are okay with that.
Yeah, and I'll second it.
Okay, further discussion. Yeah, I like, like you said, Daniel, you're pretty much doing this already through what's in the O C P policy. And, you know, just feedback from council from previous issues. I. I don't know, I'm happy with the the covenanted approach on the excess property and how that's dealt with and. If there is going to be some parkland that could be dedicated also as part of an amenity contribution. Um, I. But I don't, it was, it looked like it came out very strongly from the A P C. That they wanted the property to be in under some jurid, some other jurisdiction. And unless it's a park, I think. I I don't think it should be in another jurisdiction. I think it should just be covenanted to the property. We also have to look at property values and a whole bunch of other things involved here too. It's not as easy as as it it looks like. Okay, Sue Ellen?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am regarding. Uh, covenants, I don't think it's only park or covenant. I think there's many other tools, for example, a strata. With common property that might be an orchard or, you know, some kind of agreement with the municipality, how the land will be used. There's all kinds of different things, but and I'd like to leave that to the planning department, see what Daniel comes up with there, if anything, but I agree. If there isn't a sort of some kind of way of measuring, if it's working, then in the long term. That's what's needed. I just wanted to a a say that I'm in support of the motion as moved and seconded. And and I wanted to provide a tiny bit of clarity if needed about the word dendrites. I'm looking at the Parks Trails and Greenways recommendation and there's a funny typo part of a sentence there about hermit thrushes. And just ignore that. I think what it means is the like micro. Wildlife corridors or what in earlier years was termed green fingers or green network, just connecting all the. Backyards and neighborhoods so that everybody could hear bird song in their backyard, I think was. Part of what I remember from that meeting, but the dendrites idea is green connectivity of nature. Uh, through the. And among the buildings, usually also trails so kids can run back and forth and that kind of thing as well. And I think that's all I wanted to say. Thank you. I'll be voting in support.
Hey, thank you very much, Sue Ellen. Go ahead, Allison.
I I'm guessing the the bit about how you hold it in perpetuity, I mean, if you look at the parks plan, we've got different. Categories of park and nat, and one of them is natural. And if it is park and given to the municipality, then it is.
It's owned by the municipality.
It's owned by the municipality and then there's downsides to all that because then we've got all the liability and the maintenance issues. Um, if you use a covenant, then you've got all the issues of having to. Monitor the covenant and and all that sort of stuff and. If it's a two party covenant between the property owner and the municipality, then those covenants can be amended. So there's not a lot of in perpetuity necessarily because we.
Would not, that would have to be agreed to by both parties, so.
That has to be agreed to by both parties, but we have done that. So if if the intention is that it's never to be changed in perpetuity, then maybe you have to look at a third covenant holder. And that's going to like a conservancy or somebody. So I think the whole issue of of protection and and what it is is almost a separate discussion. And a separate policy, not built into the conservation development policy.
All right, I was I was kind of looking, I was trying to look up dendrites because I, what are they called? Dendrites?
I think there was a translation. It's okay, it was in the Parks Trails and Greenways near the top of their comments, but I think it was just a translation problem from the minute taker.
I thought it was, I thought it was just an undergrowth. It's it's fairly existent all over the island. I thought it was actually a a plant.
Dendrites are those are those brain neurons and things that connect. It was, it was a metaphor, so I just wanted to explain it a little bit and I think Daniel's got his hand up.
Yeah, Daniel, go ahead.
Just in terms of the like the protection of the land and what should be in the policy, like one approach would just be to essentially. Mirror the O C P language, right? This is set aside by suitable legal instruments in perpetuity. And that would be saying, okay, it could be either versus what I've said to the A P C and other committees is like if. If council has strong opinions on it and says, no, our goal is that it be parkland or that it be held by. You know, someone other than the the landowner, that it not be covenants, then that should be in the policy and it's clear for people that when we're seeking it. You know, to be protected, this is the level of protection that we want versus if the council says, well, it's going to depend on. The circumstance of the property and we're open for either approach and there may be, you know, multiple solutions, then we could just, we would just use O C P language or something and. And and have that, have those options open.
Yeah, I think it'd be better to have the flexibility. There's no question about that. Anybody else comments, Sue Ellen?
Yeah, just. In this motion, I'm just wondering, are we also suggesting then, are we forwarding these? Um, definitions to you because I I still don't know about. Leaving as much space na as natural space for agriculture or recreation could be. Like a a sitting, a ga, a garden, a formal garden, which. Um, are we all, because I don't, I don't like these definitions and I would like them to all come out. Do I, should I make a separate motion about that?
I think, Sue Ellen, what I was looking for from the motion is essentially then for me to redraft the policy based on this discussion to bring it back. To a to a council meeting looking for referrals. At that point so that you would have a chance to then wordsmith a finished or like a, you know, a new draft.
Right. Okay, thank you.
All right, and David, you had your hand up.
No, but I took it down from what Daniel said.
Okay, thank you. Well, as I see no hands up here. Allison, there you go.
Okay, so I'm taking it, but just to be absolutely clear, the policy is. Appendix one. I mean, right now. That's what Daniel's coming back with a revision to, not this whole other document. And so I I. You've used, they've used the, I I'm not keen on the definitions. Either, but what is productive farmland? I mean, we don't use the word farmland at all in our plan. We use the word agriculture and and domestic agriculture and and everything else. That's why, yeah, and then the other is it talks about as help maintain the character of rural communities. Well, it should be our rural community, but. Is a, is Bowen as a rural, I mean, we've always considered green space and large lots as a definition of a rural community, but. Is, you know, or, yeah, just, you know, what is a rural? What is the character of a rural community?
Coming back, coming back to the productive farmland piece, but I wasn't a part of this, but. The A L R, the agricultural land reserve holds a lot of land that is not productive farmland.
Yeah, like the categories one to five and I can't remember which is the good, good stuff versus, but we thought mostly the bad stuff.
Yeah, and 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 sometimes it's even just like rock outcroppings and things.
Yeah.
So.
So is that a term from the A L R?
Uh, no, it's not a term from the A L R, but I'm just, I'm, I'm just guessing that it may be used to. To to just try to ensure that we're protecting the productive farmland on the island from development.
Or is it the productive farmland that's being used as farmland? Is that what productive farmland means?
Well, hopefully it is, hopefully it is being used as farmland, but and and not for development purposes.
Well, there's a whole bunch of land in the A L R on the island that isn't being farmed. And it's not bad soil either.
Best on the island. Um, okay, well, Sue Ellen, go ahead and then we're.
I think that's a, that's one of the points I was trying to get some discussion about, so I appreciate this is, you know, there. It may not be used as productive farmland now, but it may be really valuable in the future when. Climate change and whatever, and I don't think, and I I mean, I. I really appreciate the A P C and the work they put into this in terms of trying to grapple with the definitions of. Uh, defining some of these things and. All of those are also in the official community plan, but I think. Um, I can see that council, a a future council might look at, oh, you're going to protect the most valuable, most. Um, the far, the area that's got the most potential to grow food in the future. Um, okay, we'll take that into account. So I I, you know, I don't, I'm not saying only nature. I'm. Asking council here, what do we think? And I like some of the wording about. Most ecologically valuable, I like the terms of of ecological assets. Or because it. Could include ability to grow food would be a municipal asset, I think. Uh, it could be and or not. Anyway, so I I support cultural resources, historic, you know, all of these kinds of things. I'm not saying no, I'm just looking for clarity in terms of what is this council mean? And I think part of what I was going to propose is something to do with sustainability and and. Some of those guidelines in the official community plan that speak to. Care careful planning so you don't lose something that you need in the future because you have to be more careful with an island, that kind of thing. So I'm not saying only nature, although I I I think natural lands are extremely important. And I'm curious about what other people think to.
I think the, you know, natural lands and and farmland should be protected and that should be part of the, part of the. The the philosophy on the conservation part of it. Maureen?
On this specific point, the simplest fix is to take out productive and just stay with farmland. And that allows for now in the in the future and so forth, but I'm wondering if we could leave the fine tuning of the.
Yep.
Definitions to to Daniel so that we can have another go at this.
Yeah, thank you, Maureen. Daniel, are you, any other questions that you have?
I guess just just on the Sue Ellen's point that she raised in terms of, so when I look at sort of the definitions of conservation development. Um, even that I had at the start of the presentation, yeah, they look at prioritizing protection of natural resources, open space and agricultural lands.
Yeah.
So I sort of wanted to confirm that 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 is the goal and in particular that agricultural land part that we're saying that's something that as well we want to. To protect and have the policy say that that would count essentially as some of your, you know, the area that's protected, it's protected from. Development, but but potentially could be, well, it's protected from development, but allowing farming.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I would think that, do you want to show a hands on that? I think that that sounds valid to me. Can we have a show of hands there that everybody agrees with that or not? Okay, Allison, I've got you. So that's everybody agrees with that, Daniel?
All right, great, thanks.
Yeah, I I I also think though, if I can just say that it needs a little bit of. We will need to do a bit of fine tuning because a hayfield is is not. I don't want people saying, well, because I've got this hayfield, then I should be allowed this extra density or whatever. So I think there needs to be some, there'll need to be some. Care taken around that.
Yeah, I think, I think even though it's going to be hopefully a very simplified a policy here, I'm just hoping that. We don't make it too complicated. I think just stay, keep it, keep it nice and easy. Anyway, I don't see any further hands up there, so I'll quickly ask a question. All in favor? Good, and I am opposed. Okay, councillor Morris is in opposition.
I was sort of going ahead, it's to do with the fact that I don't know that it should just be a policy.
Okay, thank you. And on that note, just got to go back and find my document here. So that that is about it. And so we will adjourn and meet back here at six o'clock. Thank you very much. Oh, sorry, six fifteen, we adjourn here at six and then we'll go to six fifteen, six fifteen it is. Thank you, Allison.
Thanks.
Eight fifteen here, see you later.
Oh, Robertan.
Yeah. I'm having to compete with all the music, it's Valentine.